The October 25th, 2021 meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, Assembly Bill 361, and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 1521. I would now ask that the board recorder call the roll for the attendance.
Let me promote trustee Whit first.
Okay, we're promoting the trustee who is joining us from home. Yeah, please call the order. Call the roll, please. Thank you.
Trustee Inman.
Here.
Trustee Jay.
Here.
Trustee Jamal.
Here.
Trustee Milchaker.
Here.
Trustee Prendergast.
Present.
Trustee Rydel.
Are you muted, trustee Rydel?
And student trustee, excuse me, trustee Wright.
Here.
Student trustee Mateen.
Here.
Members of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item or on any other matters of interest to the public are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board will be given, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, will be given an opportunity to ask questions by making public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meetings. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on a closed session item will be required to use a raise the hand feature that's in Zoom. And they will be unmuted by the secretary of the board and asked to speak. A two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed. Are there any people wishing to comment at this time?
We jumped a little bit ahead of the, of the public session agenda, the open session agenda. So we start with the chancellor's welcome.
Oh, it's not on, okay. Can we have the chancellor's welcome, please?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our hybrid board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome trustees Marsha Milchaker, Tim Jamal, Barbara Jay, Carolyn Inman, TJ Prendergast, James Wright, and student trustee Satara Mateen, who are joining us in person, and trustee Terry Witt-Rydel, who is joining us via Zoom. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments pursuant to Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 15-21 and in compliance with AB 361. The published agenda states that members of the public requesting to provide comments will be given the opportunity to ask questions by making public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be instructed to unmute their audio and must comply with the two-minute limit. I will now turn the meeting over to trustee Milchaker, who will call the meeting to order.
Okay, I called the meeting to order at this time. And I already did call the meeting to order. We had a little bit of, and I welcome back the trustees who are attending in person at this time and one trustee who was attending from remotely. And district and staff members of the public are attending this meeting via our Zoom webinar Are there any actions, there is an action taken in closed session, and the chancellor will read the action taken in closed session at this time.
On a seven-to-zero roll call vote, the board took action to, in closed session, to release a classified administrator pursuant to Education Code Section 72411.5.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have an invocation given by trustee Prendergast and the pledge of allegiance by trustee Jamal.
As hopefully you are aware, that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As an individual who's lost a grandmother, had a wife, a sister-in-law, a mother-in-law, and two very close friends go through breast cancer scares of their own, I'm sure I'm not alone in joining others who have gone through this with their families and loved ones. So I'd like to take a moment to reflect and honor Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Another pledge of allegiance by trustee Jamal.
Please join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, I already read what, what everyone has to do. The people in the public that would like to speak at this time has to, are required to use the raised hands feature. And a two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed, and the time, the maximum time for speakers on one specific topic shall be 20 minutes. So are there any people asking to speak?
Yes, at the moment, we have five speakers.
Thank you.
I will be allowing Nancy Rucker to speak as our first speaker.
Thank you.
Ms. Rucker, can you unmute?
Thank you.
I think I did. Did I? Good evening.
Yes, yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm here in support of and to say thank you for the vaccine mandate. I'd like to encourage you by sharing just a few of the statistics that informed me, I teach in the district, that informed me to become one of the, among the vaccinated. First of all, nearly all COVID-19 deaths in the U.S. are now in people who weren't vaccinated. From May of 2021, infections in fully vaccinated people accounted for fewer than 1,200 of more than 107,000 COVID-19 hospitalizations. That's about 1.1%. And only about 150 of the more than 18,000 COVID-19 deaths in May were in fully vaccinated people. That translates to about 0.8%. In Indiana, they saw 3,801 coronavirus deaths from January to September. 94% of them were among the unvaccinated. In Montana, from February 2021 to September, 89.5% of the cases, 88.6% of the hospitalizations, and 83.5% of the deaths were among people who were not fully vaccinated. More importantly, in California, from September 19th to September 25th, unvaccinated people were seven times more likely to get COVID, 12 times more likely to be hospitalized, and 18 times more likely to die from COVID-19. In my mind, that's a win-win. I want to say thank you for your decision. I support you 100%. Those of us who are vaccinated are winning the war against COVID hands down. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The next person will be Roy Bauer.
I don't know how that happened. I have no idea. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Well, I don't know how this happened, but since I've been given this opportunity, I do support what you've done to support the mandate. I think it's great. That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Professor Bauer. Okay, is there another one?
Yes, the next person is Melanie Hieri.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Melanie Hieri. I'm one of the faculty in the district, worked in the district 25 years, first full-time faculty member and now as a, as a full-time. I'm also an alumni, graduated from what was called Saddleback College North Campus for a really long time. Really long time. This is my home, and I've always enjoyed working here and have always felt safe working. And I'm here to thank the board for their continued, because safe, to monitor the statistics and to have a vaccine mandate so that next semester I can come back to my office almost two years after leaving it. Thank you, and I just wanted there to be some voices from the faculty out there. Thank you for having the vaccine mandate.
Thank you for your comment, Professor Hieri. Is there any other comment?
The next person is Lindsay Steinreid.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I'm a teacher here at Saddleback, and I'm speaking on the mandate as well, and I am actually hoping that you will reconsider some of the options provided in it. As I mentioned, I'm a senator at Saddleback. I was surprised when the students brought forth the vaccine mandate draft so quickly. Whether you are vaccinated or not, I don't believe people should be forced injections against their will or face losing their jobs or education or livelihood. It should be a choice. That being said, I actually supported the student mandate, vaccine mandate, because it gave options. It was not just for religious or medical, but for those students, faculty, and staff in genuine, genuine fear of the vaccine. Their mandate, the students that we serve stated they would like to give options for testing and continued remote education and work for all faculty, staff, and students. The students clearly want options, and so do many of the faculty members and staff. There is no Phase III data on this vaccine. The medical exemption is basically invalid because the vaccine hasn't been around long enough to know the long-term effects on medical conditions, nor in health in general. For all we know, we could be, not we, but a board could be approving a mandate that requires vaccine that could sterilize our student body, that could cause long-term health, and send people to early graves for a virus that has over a 99% survival rate. So I'm just asking that you please consider restructuring or giving more options for those that are not willing to taste, take that risk.
Okay, thank you, Professor Steinreid. Can you, can please get the next person to speak?
Yes, the next person is Seth Hochwald. Oh, Seth.
Hello, my name's Professor Seth Hochwald from IVC. I am asking that the board put a weekly testing option in place for those who have grave health concerns regarding the COVID-19 vaccination. I have no problem with standard vaccines such as childhood vaccines, as these vaccines do eradicate disease. The COVID-19 vaccines do not prevent infection, transmission, including asymptomatic transmission, hospitalization, or death. In addition, the spike protein created by the vaccine does not remain at the injection site and travels throughout the body, causing organ damage. Severe side effects can include myocarditis, pericarditis, cardiac problems, including heart arrhythmias, sudden heart failure, stroke, brain blood clots, Bell's palsy, guian bar, and death. For any information, please feel free to contact me through my IVC mail. I believe vaccines for those who want them and testing for those who do not are the only moral choices, given the serious issues with the vaccines. I am asking that you put a weekly testing option in place for those who have grave health concerns regarding the COVID vaccination. Also, my wife would like to talk for two minutes, too, please, and I have one question. Will you fire employees who do not get the vaccine? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Hochwald. Is his wife next? Is that it?
I'm Karen Hochwald.
Okay.
Okay. There's no vaccine mandate for Congress or for the hundreds of thousands of immigrants streaming across our southern border. Governor Newsom has appealed the federal ruling that prison guards must be vaccinated, saying they need, and I quote, "educational resources and access to clinicians." Vaccinating, mandating a vaccine that does not eradicate a disease and has substantial negative side effects is immoral, unethical, and the definition of tyranny. Mandating it because the majority voted to do so is tyranny of the majority that's un-American. I sent this board a published PubMed NIH study last night from March 2021, which demonstrates that the design, the design of COVID-19 vaccines can cause more severe disease in the vaccinated due to antibody-dependent enhancement. The inventor of mRNA technology, Dr. Robert W. Malone, has recently stated that ADE is why we are seeing cases soar in highly vaccinated countries, such as Singapore and the Netherlands at 85% full vaccination, and Lithuania at 75%. mRNA technology, per Dr. Malone, was never meant to be used in human vaccinations. These vaccinations are dangerous and spectacular failure. And finally, Comirnaty is the FDA-approved COVID-19 vaccine. It's not available in the United States. Only the EUA Pfizer vaccine is available. You can't mandate that. When Comirnaty does become available, because you are making this a workplace rule, the district, unlike the vaccine manufacturer, will not enjoy a liability shield. If you mandate this when Comirnaty is available and you do not put a weekly testing option for those objecting to vaccination in place, I will hold you responsible and accountable for any negative side effects my husband suffers from this COVID-19 vaccination. Anyone who'd like that PubMed study, I'd be happy to give it to you. Reach me via shahochwald@ivc.edu.
And also, will you fire employees who do not get the vaccine? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We will, we will look into all these, all these questions for sure. Okay, is there another comment? Thank you. We just have to answer all the, all the comments and look into, into responses later.
The next person is Deanna Schurger.
Thank you to the Board of Trustees and the chancellor for hearing my comments today. My name is Deanna Schurger, and I am a full-time member of the English Department at Irvine Valley College. I would like to voice my strong support for the COVID-19 vaccine mandate for students, staff, and faculty in the South Orange County Community College District and to thank the board for your recent decision to pursue a mandate. I am the faculty coordinator of the Writing Center at Irvine Valley College. Over the last few semesters, we have had between 400 and 500 students enrolled in the Writing Center. We have a room capacity of 121. While the Writing Center is a beautiful space, we have no windows that open, and while we do, we do have two doors, we must keep them closed for fire code. Before the pandemic, we did sometimes reach room capacity, especially at the end of the semester, as students came to earn their hours and meet with professors for help with their final papers. On Monday, December 16th of 2019, during our last full semester on campus, we had 271 different students enter and exit the Writing Center on a single day. Someone was always coughing or sneezing in the Writing Center. We even had a "cover your cough" sign, and there were some students who chose to wear masks during the cold and flu season, even pre-pandemic. On campus, the Writing Center was a vibrant and welcoming place. A mandate can help us bring that space back safely so that students can come to get the support they need in person without the fear of getting COVID or transmitting it to someone they love. I have two young children at home who are not yet able to be vaccinated. I also love being the Writing Center coordinator. I look forward to doing the hard work that needs to be done to return to campus safely and to serve our students to the best of my ability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Professor Schurger. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, the next person, Kurt.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke and Board of Trustees and student trustee Mateen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As my other colleagues, Nancy, and Roy, and Melanie, and Deanna alluded to earlier, I want to thank you for, for taking every reasonable and necessary step to assure that I and all employees and students have a safe and healthful working and learning environment and conditions. This includes requiring all employees and students to be vaccinated or, under legitimate medical necessity or religious objections, tested before coming to campus. Thank you for following the law, including the California Occupational Safety and Health Act of 1973, requiring employers to assume safe and healthful, assure safe and healthful working conditions for all California employees. Thank you for following the science, which clearly shows that vaccines save lives, that vaccines minimize transmission, hospitalization, long-term effects of COVID, and death. Thank you for following the vast majority of district employees, faculty, staff, administrators, who have already been vaccinated and who, along with every constituent group, including students, overwhelmingly support this vaccine mandate. Finally, thank you for fulfilling your professional and ethical obligations as leaders of our district by implementing all safety measures, again, reasonable and necessary, including this vaccine mandate, to assure a healthful working conditions for all employees and students so that every worker and every student can go home from campus each day to our families safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Meyer.
Yes, the next person.
Move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Yes, Hunter Holub.
Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Hunter Holub. I am a Marine Corps veteran and a student at Saddleback, as well as an employee, employee in the kinesiology program. I'm writing today that you please consider the harshness of this vaccine mandate. As a veteran, I utilize the GI Bill, a valuable tool for some people who move out of state and trying to survive in California. The GI Bill requires veterans to attend at least one class in person on campus. With this mandate, this requirement cannot be met, and a lot of veterans will not receive benefits they depend on to survive. A lot of veterans will be negatively, negatively affected by this mandate, especially those with families. Saddleback is a college that prides itself in, in support towards its veterans, and that would be the perfect opportunity to show their support towards the veteran community. The way in which all members respond to these pleas will show how the board feels about veterans. I'm also a Christian and an active member of my church. Based on the understanding of the title, seven of the Civil Rights Act, the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, I'd like to have the opportunity to exercise my right to utilize a religious exemption to the requirement that I be vaccinated, the vaccinated using the COVID-19 shots. This specific demand is based on religious beliefs and the teachings from the Holy Bible. One of the most significant reasons of the acceptance of the vaccines goes against my beliefs, is that fetal stem cells lines from aborted babies were used in either the development and/or testing of COVID-19 shots. Based on this, I would hope the board would consider the mandate and its adverse effects, effects. Also, there have been increases in COVID-19 are unrelated to level of vaccinations across 68 countries and 2,947 counties in the United States. Researchers found that countries with the higher percentage of population vaccinated have higher COVID-19 cases per 1 million people, notably Israel with over 60%.
Thank you, that's two minutes, and we're only allowing, it's in the board agenda that we're only allowed two minutes.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you, two minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Hunter, and we'll move on to the next person now.
Yes, the next person is Stacy. Where did she go? Danae McClure.
Hello, my name is Danae McClure. I'm a mother of four. And I'm currently enrolled full-time at Saddleback. 12 years ago, I was unable to finish my education due to math. Unfortunately, I failed twice and then was no longer allowed to take math at Saddleback. I would have no, I would have to go elsewhere. This was discouraging, to say the least. Fortunately, AB 705 came into effect. Thankfully, through this option and the use of my husband's GI Bill, I am on the path to successfully transfer next year for my goal in becoming a child life specialist. First hurdle nearly accomplished. But now I am set with a new hurdle, vaccination policies. It is against my religion to be vaccinated. These policies will have a negative impact on myself and hundreds of others. Having to be tested twice a week at our own expense is absolute madness. In order to receive the full benefits of the GI Bill, a financial benefit that keeps my family afloat, I am required to take one in-person course each semester. Removing hybrid class options eliminates my ability to attend any qualifying in-person class, which in turn will make it impossible for myself and many others to finish school. This is wrong. I have already enrolled in my final classes in order to receive my associate's degree and transfer next year. One of those classes being in-person, which means I would have to test two times a week and pay for it myself, which I cannot do. So if this is implemented, I have to sadly be turned away from school yet again. Shouldn't people be encouraged to go to school, successfully graduate, to better themselves, their education, and their future before putting such absurd rules into effect? Providing options for all different graphics should be your number-one priority. I have gone this semester in person twice every day to my math class, built relationships, been inspired. Not one person has had COVID in our class, and no one has been mandated for testing. Why now? Why do we have to be tested twice a week in order to come back next semester? There is no logical reason for this mandate to take place. It will take away from so many students' educations. Do not be a part of this problem. Take a stand and be the solution. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you, the two minutes is up, but thank you for speaking. Appreciate it. Now, the next person, please.
Yes, Stacy.
Stacy?
Yeah, our, our timer has frozen, so we don't. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. The timer on our screen is frozen. Okay.
I got it. Coming up on 20 minutes.
Thank you.
Let her start.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted me to wait till the timer. You can see the timer, or? No, no, the staff is keeping time, I think. We. Okay. Okay, you got it. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. It is my understanding that this mandate, the policy is still being created around this mandate, but whenever I go to the site today, you're already directing unvaccinated and students to enroll in online classes for spring semester. Help me understand why this, you're already encouraging unvaccinated students to enroll in online classes, and you've not let them know about their legal choices for exemptions. There are several students that I've came in contact with that have no idea that they know about their choices, and they are in fear that they aren't going to be able to come back next spring semester. Help me understand why you are segregating vaccinated versus unvaccinated students before the policies are even in place. I sat through last meeting, and I was sick to my stomach with the lack of ability to listen and to represent the people that put you in your very position. And then I come across this posting on your site. Being someone that works in the HR for a large healthcare organization, I would assume making sure that your students know their rights when they are registering for their spring classes when it comes to mandates. They have the right to know and demand for religious and medical exemption. Not sharing those communications with your students and faculty before the fact is illegal, and you are going to be held accountable. I urge you to communicate properly to your students around this mandate about their legal rights and ensure that testing antibodies are considered in this policy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stacy. We do want our students to know what, what's going on, but we need to get to the next person right now. So thank you so much for your suggestions.
It's 20 minutes.
Twenty minutes on that.
Oh, it's been 20 minutes on the.
No, it hasn't been, okay.
Where, where are we on the time?
17:23.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next person is Jacqueline Symbolist.
Oh, I know her.
Hi, yes, I work at Saddleback College, for those of you that don't know me. The only comments I have is if you do institute the mandate, I would ask that you have the weekly testing option for people, and also that you direct the chancellor to tell managers and administrators that they are to remain neutral on either suggesting people get vaccinated or not suggesting that people get vaccinated, because they are the ones that are in power, and they need to remain neutral. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Jacqueline, for your comments. Okay, the next person, please.
The last person we have is D'Angelo Hunter.
Oh, right, he's our student president, party president.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, hi.
Dear Honorable Board of Trustees, as a representative of the student voice, as a taxpaying citizen to the region, as a veteran, a patriot, and a fellow American, I commend you all so greatly for passing the vaccine mandate. Some of you saw me speak at the 9/11 commemoration, and to answer why I spoke so passionately about that day is because it prided me to join the military in the first place. Those near 3,000 lives lost on that day made me to decide to serve our country and because it felt like the American thing to do. Now, today, with over 720,000 lives lost to COVID-19 from the position from which you all serve, you've all done the most American thing you could have done to prevent any more loss of life amongst our communities. I'm so proud to see the student bodies and faculty administrations' voices heard on the matter and the swift action taken towards implementing the mandate. At IVC, we have been fighting to keep everyone's voices heard in implementing and everyone's towards implementing that mandate and all concerns on the matter so as to be inclusive as possible. In fact, we're moving towards having an expanded online education platform to allow most students to continue their education without interruption, even if they're unvaccinated. So thank you all for stepping up in support of this mandate and strengthening our community in its fight against COVID. And thank you for considering the many lives lost and taking action to prevent the loss of many more Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, D'Angelo, who is the student body president of Irvine Valley College. So thank you for your comments. So are there any other people that wish to speak? And that's 20 minutes, so we're just on schedule. So thank you to all your speakers. I appreciate your comments and we'll take them all under consideration. Appreciate your thoughtful comments. Right now, we're moving to board reports. Sorry?
We're having a technical issue, so if we could pause just for a second.
Technical issue, so we're pausing to take care of the technical issue. Okay, we're back and the technical difficulties have been resolved, I think, I hope. Right now, we have board reports and we're going to start with the student trustee, Sotera Martin. With her board report, please. Do you have a board report? Thank you.
Yeah. So first off, I've worked with the foundation to create a student refugee fund in order to help with financial needs. And so if you have the resources to contribute to this fund, I would highly recommend you do so through our foundation. It's tax deductible and a great way to support our students. I've also been attending ASIVC and ASG meetings. And so there's a lot of student activities going on. At Saddleback, there will be a Halloween festival and a fall fair where students will be able to have pumpkin carving contests. And at IVC, they have a Halloween festival and Dia de los Muertos celebration this Thursday for all our students. And that's all.
Can you send the board a link in order to donate to the student refugee fund?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sotera. Really active student trustee and I'm glad for the good things going on at Saddleback. So trustee Inman, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. One of the things I wanted to mention was the marvelous student leaders that we have and this is such a great example of doing something that really matters, that helps people. And I honor you for your leadership. The other thing I wanted to say was that we went to the stadium grand opening and it was fun, especially fun for me because I got to take my grandson as my plus one. And he's about 12 and a half, so he thought that was pretty much the neatest thing he'd ever done. And he loved, you know, looking down on the thing and he'd never, anyway, we just had a wonderful time. The stadium was more beautiful and more efficient than I could even have imagined. And one thing that President Stern said that I really liked was that they wanted to provide the university experience. And that is the way, you know, I think what that means is cheerleaders and fun and caring for your team and they really showed that they cared for the Bobcats. And that was, the new logo was presented that evening as well. The other thing I wanted to say is we talked about breast cancer. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month and six years ago, I launched a book about domestic violence with some other people. And it's the silent killer and what it takes is our ability and willingness to talk about it and have a conversation. So I hope each of you will be open. Someone in your life may want to talk to you about it sometime and if they do, then that's what they need to do. And so we try to be good listeners when that happens. Anyway, thank you so much for a great October.
Thank you, trustee Inman, and I'm learning so much from my board members. Okay, trustee, trustee Jay.
On October 2nd, I, along with the other trustees, attended the opening of the new Saddleback Stadium with ribbon cutting and the reception. It was a great event and a great way to introduce this beautiful facility to the college and to the community. On October 21st, was IVC's annual Giving Day, a special day to show support for IVC and especially its students. It also marked IVC's 36th anniversary. Go Lasers! On this day, the foundation raised $41,113 through 134 contributions. Five of these gifts came from first-time donors. Four new scholarships were established, including one endowment scholarship. Gifts were also received to support caring campus and first-generation college student activities. Another gift will support IVC's engineering and drafting program. On a special note, student trustee Sotera Martin started a student refugee fund to benefit refugees, members of our community. If you missed out, mark your calendar for the next Giving Day, Thursday, October 20th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jay. Okay, next trustee Jamal.
Amazing reports from all three trustees. Student trustee Martin, thank you for establishing this refugee fund. I'm glad you're going to send it to all of us. I think you'll find most of us, not all of us, are going to contribute. I don't have much to add. I agree with Carolyn, trustee Inman, on the opening of the stadium on a warm Saturday afternoon. The stadium is fabulous. I think it adds another dimension to our college, not just in terms of recruitment and retention of athletes, but I think the overall experience here, as trustee Inman said, a university experience, but also building a sense of community, not just within our population here, our students, our faculty and our administration, but also the community at large. It's really a place, it's a destination now. And I think it's only going to get better as we move forward. The other thing I would mention is that I did attend the Sneak Peak event for the Saddleback College Foundation. This was, I guess, an event to drum up support for the actual event in a couple of weeks and very well done, Dr. Stern and the foundation team. But the real star of the show by far was, I think it's Gabby Jackson. If anyone had a chance, well, those who were there saw a pretty powerful riveting performance by a talented young lady and I think she stole the show. So if you didn't get a chance to see her at the Sneak Peak, you'll get to see her at the gala and I hope that everyone watching today or on the dais will be there on, I think it's November 11th.
November 13th.
November 13th.
13th.
The Saddleback College Foundation Gala. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Jamal. Trustee TJ.
All right, so I won't repeat what others said about the stadium grand opening. That was certainly fun to attend. The game wasn't quite what we wanted it to be, but the rest of the ceremonies were certainly enjoyable. I will not be able to attend the veteran ceremony, but I certainly will be thinking of of our veterans on that day as well as on actual Veterans Day. Having, be the child product of several veterans is deep in our family history. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, trustee. And trustee Wright, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Again, I want to just tell everyone that Saddleback College celebrated the opening of its new stadium of arts. The event was kicked off with a ceremonial ribbon cutting with remarks made by Board of Trustees. Board of Trustees President Marcia Melchecker and President Cern. In addition to all seven trustees, several local elected officials and our, and their staff, the dignitaries there attended a VIP reception at the Ferry Foundation Room. The football team is not doing very well right now. They have won two games and lost five. They are playing again, they are playing again on October 30th. I also attended the Saddleback College Foundation on the 21st Annual Gala Sneak Peak Reception. This was done on Thursday, October 14th at 6:00 PM, Saddleback College Fine Arts Complex. We were treated to a excessive behind-the-scenes glimpse of our upcoming gala features. And the last thing I want to talk about is the fact that I have, on last Saturday, I got my third shot for Madora. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Wright. And now trustee Whit Riddell, do you have a board report from remotely?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to quickly tell everyone about the plant sale. I am on the foundation board and I wanted to share with you that the plant sale will start October 26th and the 29th, Wednesday and Friday, for those who place your order online. And you can go to the plant sale on October 28th to October 31st. I think it's a marvelous opportunity for you to to get an awesome deal on the foliage that we have, that our students have produced on campus. Also, our gala, Dream Big, is, as everyone mentioned, Saturday, November 13th. And I'm really hoping that faculty and staff and the public, that you'll come and invest in the students' progress and in our programs. It is so important that we all participate. I hope you can make it. The stadium dedication, I think the most important thing that I heard from anybody's speeches was from Dr. Stern. Liking it to a university setting is truly, truly, truly inviting. So I hope we do more of that and thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Whit Riddell. And I'll give my board report. Most of it's been given, but I'll try to be quick about it. The stadium, the Saddleback College fabulous new stadium dedication was fun. As trustee Inman said, they revealed the scary Bobcat graphics, which I love the graphic. It was, you know, a reveal at that day. And then I spoke as the board president and I did a lot of stand-up comedy because it was a very hot day and I wanted to cool the folks off with a big laugh or two. And I also attended the Saddleback College Sneak Peak Foundation Gala and they had incredible hors d'oeuvres from their culinary arts department. And as trustee Jamal said, the student that was singing was just incredible. She was just fabulous. And if you come to the foundation event at the Ritz-Carlton, you'll be able to hear her sing and you won't be sorry. And just so you know, the trustees do not, the trustees do not get comped to go to these fundraisers. We all pay our own way because we believe it's really important to support the colleges. So we support the colleges and we thank all of you for supporting the colleges as well. And I also attended the Saddleback College Literary Magazine called The Wall and it was online and the students presented and the faculty advisor, Gina Schaefer, is the faculty advisor. And The Wall has won many awards, including the Pacemaker Award. And the Orange County Business Council is having the Red Tape into Red Carpet Awards Ceremony to streamline the regulatory process and they're noting Saddleback College's district new fully online bidding program. And as trustee Whit said, the plant sale is great. I always do it. It's virtual now. You can pick out the plants online and then drive through to pick them up. Check out the events for the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, for their plays coming up, for their art gallery exhibits and their athletics and lots of good things coming up. So thank you. Now we're going on to the associated student government reports. So Sam Lockhart from Saddleback College and D'Angelo Hunter for Irvine Valley College.
Good evening, trustees. Good evening, members of the public. Thank you again for having us here. I do have some good news that our progress with resurrecting campus life is well underway and is experiencing a good deal of success. We recently co-organized and will host next week a Fall Involvement Fair and we recently hosted an undocumented student recognition week last week. And I will, this is a stance that I feel pertinent to ASG, so I wish to add some details about our stance on the vaccine issue. I emphasize that ASG is still willing to cooperate with those who do not elect or to be vaccinated or have reservations about implementing the board implementing the aforementioned policy. We do not wish to antagonize anyone based on their religious beliefs or choices. Saddleback is a campus where all ideas can be expressed without fear of judgment and this current ASG administration will work to ensure that ideology remains. When we find compelling evidence that suggests the course of action we recommended, be wise, we will work to make things right. But after months of deliberation, we are confident that we have made the right decision and are currently advocating for the current course of action. I respect that those who oppose these measures are taking an unpopular stance and applaud for their courage for doing so. I cannot remain silent about this particular issue and respectfully, I must respectfully personally disagree with your issue at this moment, respectfully disagrees with your views and your course of action, but we fully support what the board is doing and we currently fully support a campus where all ideas can be expressed regardless of how they compare to the status quo. Thank you for hearing us out and that is it for me.
Thank you, student body president Lockhart. Now, D'Angelo Hunter, you already spoke. Would you like to speak again? The president of Irvine Valley College Student Body?
Yes, I'd love to give a report.
Thank you.
Awesome. Person foremost within student government, we welcome nine new senators. Our Student Body Association, ASIVC, is now in full force at 24 members. That's pretty awesome. Our retreat is this upcoming Friday and this will be cool because it will be an online retreat, but with the in-person element of having lunch. If people follow the, if people can come grab lunch and hang out as long as they follow COVID guidelines this Friday. This is just for ASG, or ASIVC. So that's awesome. During that as well, we underwent Title IX training and also another form of training that we undertook was respectful communication within gender and sexual diversity, which was given to us, which is really awesome. I really recommend that to anyone, especially if you're not sure of how to be an ally to people who use pronouns or other things. Within our community, yes, we do have a Dia de los Muertos slash Halloween Festival coming up this Thursday at 4:30. That would be behind the Performing Arts Center, so that's super exciting. And then also within student government, just to go back real quick, we're also working on like web design with the administration just to kind of get our voices heard. And then also then student government bringing awareness towards certain services that are at IVC currently, such as emergency funds if necessary for students and whatnot. And then back to the kind of community, I did want to give a special shout out to the IVC Foundation for hitting their goal of $40,000. Super awesome. Those are more scholarships for students. So, and they also matched us, so we got an additional $7,000 in funds, which is about 17.5% increase for our scholarships that we give out. And then for our volleyball team, they're on a 4-0 run and they're killing it, so they're 18th in the state. So if you get a chance. So if you get a chance, try to tune into a volleyball game. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. And you find out about these games online on both colleges' websites. So thank you for that information, President Hunter. And next, Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Daniel Droulet.
Thank you. Good evening, Chancellor Burke and trustees. Four things tonight. First of all, from November 4 through 6, I will be attending, along with five of my Academic Senate Cabinet colleagues, the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges Plenary Session. We'll be doing that virtually. And the topic is Leading Change: Teaching, Learning, and Governance in a Hybrid World. I cannot think of better timing for this, as online education continues to be a strong priority for IVC as we negotiate the current times that we're in. I'd like to mention just four words of thanks this evening. First of all, thinking back to teaching, learning, and governing in a hybrid world, and thinking about a couple of public announcements that went out this week, I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Bob Bermuda, our Vice Chancellor of Tech and Learning Services, for providing leadership during a time when, within a week or two of time, we had to move from in-person to online, and now we are figuring out how to mix the two. Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor Bermuda. I'd also like to thank Kathleen Burke, our Chancellor, for her terrific leadership at a time when I cannot imagine what the pressure of being leadership would be at a community college district, given COVID and given all of the discussion that has gone on with that. I'd like to give a special thanks and a shout out to our ASIVC President, DeAngelo Hunter, for his public comments tonight, and for stating in those comments that he sees civil engagement in the shaping of public regulations and policies as an American virtue. Here, here for that. We are proud of our students and their leadership. Thank you again. And finally, thanks to the Board of Trustees. You have exercised quite willingly your fiduciary responsibilities during a difficult time, when it is indeed your responsibility to both legally and ethically act in the others' best interests. That is a complicated task, and I thank you on behalf of the Senate for taking that task seriously and for leading us through our recent meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Professor Droulet. And now, Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to start by echoing Dan's acknowledgement of the hard work and skilled leadership of both Vice Chancellor Bermuda and Chancellor Burke. We are a better district because of them, and I would like to thank them both. Next, I'd like to thank you, members of the Board of Trustees, for the courageous leadership and concern for the welfare of district administrators, faculty, staff, and students that you showed last month by voting for a vaccine mandate. Last month, you also heard from a number of people opposed to such a mandate. Many identified themselves as taxpayers, giving the impression that they reside in the district and are your constituents, but that is questionable. Some of them didn't even know the name of our college. They called it Saddleback Valley College. Others apparently didn't know that we are not a K-12 district, since they referred to the supposed harm to children of wearing face masks. Given that, I thought it would make sense for you to hear from people who actually do attend or work at the colleges and actually are your constituents. As of this morning, here are the statistics of all categories of district employees who are fully vaccinated against COVID-19. 93% of administrators, 91% of classified managers, 83% of classified staff, 88% of full-time faculty, 76% of part-time faculty, 81% of police officers. That means that 81% of total employees have been fully vaccinated. That is an overwhelming majority. If this were an election, we'd say that the candidate won in a landslide. It is absolutely clear that the overwhelming majority of district employees think that the best way to protect their own health and the health of others, and to ensure a safe working environment, is to be vaccinated against COVID-19. And as demonstrated by their unanimous resolution in favor of a vaccine mandate, the students of Saddleback and Irvine Valley College also agree. I know I'm over time. Let me just end by saying you did the right thing last month, and for that, your actual constituents are more than grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Professor Lovett. Thank you for the statistics, and I couldn't have said it better, so I won't. I'll just leave your comments as saying what needed to be said. Thank you. And next, Faculty Association, Professor Louis Long.
Well, my colleagues have stolen most of my thunder here.
That happens to me, too.
Make an effort to get something said. I'd also like to echo their gratitude to Vice Chancellor Bermuda, and especially for the quiet and intelligent leadership by consensus of our Chancellor Kathleen Burke, who I think has done a wonderful job of leading our district during a very difficult time, and done it more wonderfully perhaps because her leadership has been so quiet and behind the scenes. A lot of attention has been paid tonight to the board's decision last month to adopt a vaccine mandate for those participating in on-campus instruction at Saddleback and IVC. And I just want to point out, as a leader of the Faculty Association, that faculty members are in a unique position in the district, since they're routinely placed in relatively small spaces with from 20 to upwards of 75 students, sometimes several times a day. As Professor Lovett pointed out, the overwhelming majority of faculty members are supportive of a vaccine mandate, and not primarily perhaps because of concerns for their own safety, but for the safety of their students, but also especially of their families, including vulnerable family members and unvaccinated small children, as my colleague, Professor Sugar, pointed out earlier in her public comments. As a result, as Professor Lovett pointed out, an overwhelming majority of the faculty are already in full compliance with a mandate. 88% of the full-time faculty and 76% of the part-time faculty have already uploaded proof of vaccination to the district website, and that's just those who uploaded proof of vaccination. The number of those who have actually been vaccinated is probably higher. While I deeply respect the right of individuals to express their beliefs, especially when they differ from that of the majority, decisions regarding the implementation of a vaccine mandate need to be based upon credible science and reliable data, not upon carefully selected evidence, dubious science, or conspiracy theories. And so I also join my colleagues in my gratitude to the board for their decision last time, and to our district administration for their role in implementing this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Long. And that's why you're a professor of English and literature, because you can say things so beautifully, so thank you. And next, Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening. Thank you so much, President Melchekker. Good evening, Board, Chancellor Burke. I hope you are all well. True to our IVC classified professionals, we are moving along, trying to be our caring campus that we are. We have some great, exciting things coming up. As trustee Barbara Jay stated, we opened up a caring campus foundation account, which we're super excited to be able to raise funds for more scholarships for students. Another thing we're super proud and excited for is our Classified Completion Team, which is the first ever Classified Completion Team through the Guided Pathways Initiative, will be hosting a first national student college generation day that will be held November 8, along with other Classified Completion Teams. We will be hosting, it's a three-day event, starting November 8, running through November 10. And we will have an exciting panel of faculty, staff, and students showing their pride of being first-generation college students. We will be hosting booths throughout the campus with resources for first-generation students. And most of all, we'll be offering support in honor of our students. If you're on campus, please come see us. We more than welcome you. We will also have a huge marketing campaign online, so look out for that. Also, just wanted to thank you all for your support of our classified. We're very, very honored to have all of your support, and we keep on plugging along. Thank you.
Thank you, Desiree. I'm a first-generation college student, so maybe I should, no, thank you. You're really doing an enormous amount for our students and for our college campus, for Irvine Valley College. And there isn't anybody from Saddleback College, is that correct? No, okay. And the next one, California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green. Is he here? Oh, no report. And what about Police Officers Association, Bo Arbuthnot? No report. And there's no board request for reports, right? Okay, so then, right now, we're moving to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 5.1, the third public hearing out of five to solicit input from our constituents regarding the composition of trustee areas. So we are now at Board Agenda Item 5.1, and to conduct a third public hearing to solicit input regarding the composition of trustee areas. I would like to officially open the public hearing for Board Item 5.1. The public hearing on the matter is now open. But before we have the public hearing, Chancellor Burke will provide an introduction. So Chancellor Burke?
The agenda item pertains to a public hearing and presentation for the redistricting update as it relates to voting areas and trustee elections in the South Orange County Community College District. This is the third of five required meetings in the redistricting process.
We will now move to Item 5.2, Redistricting Presentation. For the presentation, we will hear from Paul Mitchell of the company Redistricting Partners. Mr. Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Thanks for having me. This is a follow-up to the last time I spoke with you regarding the redistricting process, and we'll go to the first slide. Okay, it's like it's a PDF. So for folks who maybe are watching for the first time, and I see there are people who are participating online and watching, redistricting is a process that we undergo every 10 years for any agency that has district boundaries for election districts. And so most people know of Congress and the legislature, but it's also true for the county supervisors in Orange County and for cities, and water districts, and school boards, and community college districts. It is something that we have to do every decade for a couple reasons, primarily to ensure that everybody has equal voting rights. Within the US, redistricting has become very political, and it's been the subject of a number of continuing lawsuits over, you know, the legality of different redistricting processes and the ways that people end up drawing lines. So we're sure to see a lot more lawsuits at the federal level in the coming decade. Next slide. So there are some traditional redistricting principles that we follow in California and nationally, but in California, we also have a little higher bar for municipal governments in how we do redistricting. So I'll talk about that a little bit. But first, the basic principles of how we do this. One is that districts need to be equal-sized. And when we say that, we're talking about whole people, residents based on the 2020 census. We don't redistrict based on the number of voters or eligible voters or some other kind of metric. As recently as a few years ago, Supreme Court took a case out of Texas and reaffirmed that we draw districts based on people. And the reason we draw districts to be equal size is because when districts are not equal-sized, you have some people in one district that might have an outsized representative power, and some people in other districts that might have diluted representative or voting power. To think about it in a real extreme example, we redistricted for a community college that hadn't redistricted in 50 years, and they had one district with 12,000 people and one district with 100,000 people. And in that instance, the people in the 12,000-person district had the luxury of having eight times the representative power and a similar amount of increased voting power relative to the people who lived in the bigger district with the same number of representatives. So balancing districts is important, and we try to balance districts to within 10%. So the largest district and the smallest district are no further than 10% apart from each other. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning they need to be whole parts. That sounds simple and obvious, but there have been places that we've seen where districts would start in one part and then just kind of like disappear and pop up somewhere else, and that's not legal in redistricting. Districts should be compact, but don't mistake compactness for small. You'll have some districts that are very large in terms of square miles, but the idea is to have districts that are more circles-and-square-like rather than long serpentine shapes, or districts look like octopuses or something like that. In California, we have a rather nuanced definition for compactness, and it says that districts should be drawn with nearby populations adjacent to each other, and not to link a area with a faraway population bypassing other nearby populations. Redistricting should preserve communities of interest, and for that, we're thinking about things that you can see in the data largely. You want to ensure that people who maybe live in the same city, that might be a community of interest, or maybe go to the same schools, maybe those who live in a hillside area or live in an urban area or live along the coast. So there's different things that you can think of as kind of built-in communities of interest within the redistricting process, and then there might be additional communities of interest that come forward to identify themselves and say that they want to be drawn in a single district. And then following other city-county governmental lines is another best practice for redistricting. It's always good to have a kind of rational basis upon which you've devised a redistricting line, and using existing governmental boundaries is always a good best practice. And next slide. So these are your district lines, as they currently are. And if we go to the next slide, we can see that for these district lines, we have all the population breakdowns in data. The most important part is if you go to the next slide, you'll see I've highlighted a section. That highlighted section is the population of each district, and if it's small and hard to see, I think you should have gotten a PDF or printout of it in your packet, too. So when we look at the populations of the districts, you'll see some that are as big as 216,000 people and some that are as small as 110,000 people. In that example of a district that's 216,000 people in one district and 110,000 people in the other district, it is almost as if the people in the district with 110,000 are nearly twice as well-represented in terms of having a trustee that is dedicated to them versus the people in the 216,000-person district. And the deviation, the difference between that high and low is nearly 100%. It's 71.6. So essentially, that deviation, that gulf between the biggest and smallest district creates a really large imbalance, likely means that the voting power of the people in the smaller district is more valuable than the voting power of the people in the larger district and so on. So one of the challenges you're going to have in your redistricting is you're going to have to narrow what is a rather large gulf between the biggest and smallest district. If we go to the next slide, we've drawn up, at your request, three draft plans. The first draft plan sought to unify split cities in the current lines. And we started with that goal, and as we got to issues of having to balance, we had to kind of go away from that goal in order to get to that equality as well. So we were trying to do that as our starting point, and then we went from there to create what were the best-balanced districts we could. I draft Plan Two seeks to unify school districts. So it started So it started with the school districts, and in my presentation that I did while you were having your meeting, I made an extra slide that shows that in one of the plans, we just followed the Saddleback Unified School District. Four of the districts are encapsulated within the Saddleback Unified School District. And then the other three are in the other three unified school districts. Not perfectly fitting because they wouldn't be equal-sized, but using that as kind of a rational basis for driving those choices about where to put lines. And then the third plan was based on using the existing lines. And again, I have an example where you can look at the existing lines and that plan at the same time with overlays to show a little bit about how that relationship fits. In addition to having those packets for each of these plans, we also have web maps. So, if I could share my screen, I can show the web maps and zoom in to those and show you like street level of how those boundaries look. But if not, you should have those available to you, and if not, I can make sure that they're provided. They're really easy, like...
We don't see them now. I don't know. Are you trying to show them the...
No, I can't share my screen, so I can't show them.
Okay, okay. We haven't seen those, I don't think.
We've sent you the web maps and they're little, they're just HTML files. If you just double-click on it, it opens up the web map and you can zoom in and do all of that.
Okay, thanks for sending them.
So, if you go to the next slide, we'll show Draft Plan One. So Draft Plan One, like I said earlier, it kind of started with the idea of unifying some of the cities that were split in the existing lines. You'll see, if we go to the next slide, that data table on the next slide shows that the largest district, the district with the most population, is District B at 4.1% over. And the smallest district, the one with the least population, is District F at 3.3% over. Now, we are using letters instead of numbers. It will be up to you as the board to work with us to assign letters to numbers. That's an easy part of it. Generally, when things are getting moved around so much, we don't want to make presumptions about which district number would be the new district number for each of the trustees. So we can work with you and your staff on making sure that in the next draft, we have numbers assigned to these. But in our, as a practice, when we do our first drafts, we just go with letters because we don't want to offend somebody by having a District Three and they say, "I live in District Three." Now, that one's District One, you know, it's just... So right now, they're just letters, just placeholders. Narrowing that deviation so significantly has a big impact on, you know, the overall district. So that if you look at the shape of these districts, you can see some of the larger districts have turned pretty big, the ones that were overpopulated. If we go to the packets that you have, you should have individual pages for each district, so you can look at any one of the districts at a time. But for the expediency of this presentation, we'll just go to the next slide and it'll have the next plan, and that's Plan Two. As I stated earlier, this plan was based largely on the school districts. So if you look at D, E, F, and G, those four community college board districts fall roughly within the footprint of the Saddleback Unified School District. The District A is largely within the footprint of the Tustin School District. B is largely in the footprint of Irvine School District and shares that with C. And then C is the only district that overlaps the Newport-Mesa Unified School District. So, the line between C and D is the line between where the Newport-Mesa Unified School District ends and where the Saddleback Unified School District begins.
So where's the Capistrano Unified School District?
Capistrano Unified School District, I have Tustin, Irvine, Saddleback, and Newport-Mesa. Oh, Capistrano is down in F, sorry. It was the same color on my map. So, Capistrano Unified School District is in that area. Unfortunately, on mine, they're just both colored green, so it was hard to differentiate between the two. So Saddleback Unified School District and Capistrano School District are in that footprint of... And Capistrano looks like it's mostly in F. And then the line between C and D is Newport-Mesa, the Saddleback Unified School District. So thank you very much for having me.
That's not right. Capistrano goes, is probably F and G, I would say.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
Oh, what about Laguna? You missed Laguna School.
There's a Laguna Beach School District.
Laguna Beach School District might be a high school or elementary school district? Or is it a unified school district?
It's a unified school district.
Yeah, in the census data we got, I don't see the Laguna Beach Unified School District, so I'm not sure. I can look that up for you. Yeah.
Look it up.
I think part of the point of what we were looking at was along the boundaries between E and D and B and C, we're using school district boundaries as kind of trying to help define those. And so if you were to ask like, "Well, why do the lines look like this?" then part of the justification would be using those underlying school districts. And we can send you a map of just the school district boundaries so that we can make sure that that really is reflected there. The next slide shows the data table for that plan, and the deviation for this plan is 7.7. We have one District B that is overpopulated by 3.8% and one District G that is underpopulated by 3.9. On the next slide, you'll see Plan Three. And Plan Three is the one that's based most on the existing lines. So we talked earlier about these deviations and how they're shaped. In this, this version of the plan, B is a little bit larger than the current District Two. So B's footprint is largely what the District Two footprint is, but it expands out. District F is largely the footprint of District Six. District A is largely the footprint of District One. District Three is largely the footprint of District C. Where you start to get the big population impacts is that District Four and District D somewhat share a footprint. And then, in this situation, you have this somewhat new District G that is, G and E essentially are where Five and Seven end up going as they're adjusting for population. So, the most similar districts are on the extremities, but in the middle, there's so much population change that there's a necessity to move those districts around. I'd say that the flexibility potentially for future iterations of this would be more in that middle area and the orientation of E and G. You're likely going to end up, no matter how we do this, having one district that takes some of that East County, one district that takes the coastal, and then multiple districts from, you know, that more urban areas around Tustin and Irvine, going into Lake Forest and Mission Viejo. That, that area with the denser population, you know, clearly is going to have to end up being around, you know, that four or five district footprint. If we look at the, if we look at the draft plan data table, the next slide, the deviation on this plan is 6.2%. So it's a narrower deviation than the prior one. But all of these plans have, they've come a long way from your current lines. Your current lines were to 70-plus percent deviation. So, they've had to move a lot more than, you know, most of the places where we're doing redistricting, where maybe they're at 14% deviation right now and they just need to like move a couple things to get down that extra 4%. You're having to come down 65%. So it's a, a really significant set of changes that are necessary in your plans.
But when we redistricted last, I was on the board and it was very even. We had, we'd had every trustee district was very even. So there must have been population growth between then and now. So, because it was done very, very accurately and evenly.
Did you, did you redistrict in 2011?
It was, yes, yes. So...
Okay, for some reason, I thought that maybe you would not redistricted since two cycles ago, but that's great. Yeah, it is pretty significant population change. And I know that there has been significant population change in your area, for sure. So, you know, if in the last, you know, 10 years, it is possible that your, you know, your District Six grew by 50, 60,000 people. District Five would have had to lose a lot of population, but yeah, that, you know, we could look at what your, what your redistricting was last time. But we do know from the census data that the, the total amount of change that's going to have to happen is... It's, you're at the top of the list, basically, in terms of having large deviations going into the process. And so it's going to necessitate more change, some of which might be uncomfortable in that process. We go to the last slide. We just have your schedule, including today's meeting. The meeting here is a first look at some draft maps and emphasis on draft. We can take any input you have. And we have other staff that are watching this hearing tonight that are taking notes. So if there are things that you want to see in the draft plans differently, we're happy to come back with more draft maps or revised draft maps for the meeting on the November 15th. Then we kind of have a break over Christmas and come back in January when we can show you maps and get you to make any further last adjustments to those maps and finalize what will be your single plan that goes forward to a vote on February 28th. And that vote on a final plan would be a vote on a final plan that had been public for seven days so that any members of the public could have access to it, give feedback. And what we want to ensure is that consistent with the State Fair Maps Act, that we are having all this work and discussion about the redistricting lines being done in a public setting and that any plan that ends up getting adopted is one that has been out there in the public space for at least a week. And there's no like, you know, last meeting, somebody walks in with a new perfect map that nobody's ever seen and it just gets passed. So, that's why we have that finalizing the map on January 24th and then that period before a final vote on a single map on February 28th. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Trustee Jay has a question.
Yes, I'd like you to put on these maps, put on the freeway, the I-5 and the 405. That would make us much easier for, for most of us to realize where the boundaries are. Maybe some of the major off-ramps.
Can you scroll back to the Plan Three?
Plan...
Let's go to the next one, because that's the gray one. Go to, oh, this is, scroll up again. Yeah, I've got, the ones that I have on my screen are the updated maps. So, the updated maps I have have the freeways colored. This version, I think, was one that you got earlier. So, yeah, we can send you the, I can send you this PowerPoint that I have up on my screen so that you have access to the freeways. They're on there now.
Yeah, please put the freeways on there and some of the major off-ramps. That would be really helpful for me and most people to understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have the freeways on there and then the web map.
I don't see it now.
I don't see the freeways either.
No, you won't see the freeways because the PowerPoint that I have on my screen is the one that has the freeway.
Okay, but we didn't, we did not receive the, a copy of the maps with the freeways. We received a copy of the maps that we're looking at right now, which really doesn't even have the cities on them. They have...
It's very faint. We barely read the names of the cities.
I, I'm sorry, but I was, I have, I have all this on my screen to share with you. I didn't know you were going to be running the presentation. So I can make sure that you get this PowerPoint with the streets more clearly defined. And then also, maybe in the future, we can set up so that I can show the Zoom maps so that I can zoom in and show things as well. That would be, that's what we do in most of our redistrictings, is we run it from our side.
Yes, okay. Okay, Trustee Jamal has a question.
Well, I just, I agree with Trustee Jay. I just wanted to augment it that, that we need more detailed maps, Paul.
Yeah, they're in my pocket. They're like right here. I'm sharing it.
I get it. It's not in our pocket. So, if there's, when you, I guess, let me ask. If you were to share it, I mean, it should be shared publicly. We wouldn't, it just, it wouldn't be sent to us. If we're able to see more detailed maps, wouldn't that have to be put on the website? If we do it in between meetings, can we do that? No?
We can send them to you. You'll have them electronically in a few minutes.
Along with the share with... But can we share it? Everyone should see that.
We can briefly redo the tiles behind there.
Go ahead, Chancellor.
Yeah, I mean, if you want us to put them up, we can do that as well.
Oh, I didn't know you had them.
I don't.
He has them.
He has them. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Please send them to us so we can study them.
Right, it'd be nice to see more detailed maps. It was hard to tell. I mean, the first thing, of course, we all want to see where our districts are and then see how it interrelates with the entire district. And without the detail, it was impossible to tell. And I think the comment about Capistrano, that's not quite correct.
Laguna Beach, too.
I live in Mission Viejo. Capistrano is a big part of Mission Viejo. So, yeah, I guess if we're going to share, if we're going to have detailed maps, they should be shared with, not just us, but with the public in some way.
That's true. I agree with that, just because we want it to be transparent.
And there is a Laguna Beach Unified School District.
That's true, absolutely. I have a good friend that teaches there. Trustee Edmond, do you have a question?
Yes, I have just one question, and it's kind of theoretical at this point. If two trustees end up having to run against each other for one of these new districts and one of them would be up in '22 and the other one would be up in '24, what happens?
Oh yeah, that's a good question.
So, I don't think that you would confront that situation in any of these draft plans, but what would happen is that when you, when you replace your lines with the county, the redistricting process actually takes effect over the course of two election cycles. So whatever seats are up in '22, those elections would be held in those districts. And then, two more years later, the elections would be held in the other districts. But if two people happened to live in the same district, it's not like because they had an election in their district that now they're no longer a trustee. They would still be carried over because they were elected in this, they were elected to a four-year term. So, the most important first step to know is that whenever you do these transitions, nobody like loses an office because their district lines change. The second thing is that if you did have a situation where two trustees were in the same district, then they could either make a decision to run against each other or they could move and move into another district. But like I said, I don't think that's necessarily what's on hand in the maps that we've provided you in either of these three drafts, if I'm correct.
I'm not sure because you can't, you can't really see. What?
We've looked at all of them.
We, I discussed it and we think there might be. It's not clear. I discussed it with the chancellor, actually. We, we think that there might be. I'm not allowed to talk about it, sorry. Okay, so, so I don't know where TJ's getting his information. Okay. Okay, TJ, Pendegras, Trustee Pendegras?
Yeah, so, I guess that would be good information to have, to see where President is, but it shouldn't be the basis of our decision, obviously. Just curious, thinking in the future, because we have had this situation where we did redistrict 10 years ago. It was pretty balanced then. And then such a shift, do you have an opinion on which one of these maps would lend itself easier to adjustment in the future? Or is that impossible to determine at this point?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really hard to determine that. You know, obviously, population growth, three big functions in population growth. One is new development. And a lot of people put a lot of emphasis on places that have new development because it's something they can see, like the human eye says, "Oh, look, all these new people." The other can be density. So an area that has maybe low density right now might have literally more people living in different apartments or more people living in, in single-family households. And so you can have density coming either those two ways, and also population loss. There aren't a lot of places in California where we have a lot of true population loss, but we can have some either slower rate of growth or population loss in some parts of the state. So, it's hard to predict exactly where that would be in 10 years. And you're not actually allowed to redistrict mid-decade. You would have to redistrict again in 10 years. And so, you know, it's almost hard to predict exactly what that future would bring. There might be some pieces of that if you were to look at, you know, some city planning and some known new developments. But again, you might say, "Okay, there's going to be this new development in Irvine. You know, that's going to bring a lot." But then you find out in 10 years that there was, you know, another part of town that just had a lot... But then you find out in 10 years that there was, you know, another part of town that just had a lot more kind of infill or a lot more people living in the same, in the same properties.
Thank you. I just want, did you do the redistricting for the Rancho Santiago District in 2012, or I think it was around that year?
I don't recall if we did Rancho Santiago.
Okay, you don't know, or you don't recall, or you don't know?
I don't recall. We did a number of community colleges. I was the primary line drawer for the community colleges. But I don't recall if we did Rancho Santiago or not, or maybe we assisted them. I don't know that we were. I don't recall. Kimmy Shigatani would remember. I know that.
Okay, well, can you get back to me on that? Can you get back to me on that?
Yeah, I can, I can ask Kimmy.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I think it would be really helpful to have more information for these districts because, you know, they're can't really tell anything. And they're, and each one is, I know you changed it to the letter district for a good reason, but you can't really tell which district is which. At least you get some of an idea, but you don't really know. And you can't really tell which cities are in the district. So it makes it kind of difficult for me to see what cities are in the various districts. So.
We can definitely provide you with a, with a report that would say what cities are in each district.
Okay.
And
A map.
We can make sure that you have the maps with a little bit more detail so that you can see that and, and get that to you.
Yeah, we'd like a little more detail on the map so we could see a little bit more detail. So, because it's really difficult to tell what these maps mean, at least, you know. Unless you're like a great map person, it's hard to, to really understand it. So thank you, thank you so much. Are there, I have one other question. I really thought that the Voting Rights Act was initiated statewide. I guess it was initiated statewide a number of years ago. And then, and then federally, it was initiated, I think, in 1968, something like that. Probably it was Lyndon Johnson that initiated the first Voting Rights Act. But I thought it was initiated so that certain ethnic groups can choose their own trustee. I thought that was the reason behind it. Was that the reason behind it?
Yeah, so the Federal Voting Rights Act, you're right, 1965, doesn't speak a lot to districted election systems, although I mean, going from at-large districts, although you can use the Federal Voting Rights Act to implement a lawsuit over that conversion. In California, there was one, I think, in the last 30, 40 years in Santa Maria. But it was really, really, really hard to take a Federal Voting Rights Act lawsuit to do the conversion. So they created the California Voting Rights Act lawsuit, which makes it very easy to force a district to convert to single-member districts where each district elects just one trustee. And it is largely built around the minority populations and their ability to influence elections. And it doesn't need, like you do in federal law, the idea that you would have a district that's predominantly or majority, one minority. You could have a group that's, you know, 20 or 30% of a district still be enough to what they call influence the outcome of an election under the federal, under the California Voting Rights Act. And you do have three districts at least that, you know, are, you know, 20 to 30% Latino or 20 to 30% Asian in your current districts. And you have at least one district right now in your current lines that's 25% Latino. So it is something to look at to make sure that you don't have a Federal Voting Rights Act situation, but I don't believe you do because it would require you to be able to have 50% of one ethnicity in a district. You can look at the different plans and see how they each fare in terms of in terms of being drawn in a way that would allow those minority populations to affect the outcomes of elections. But you can't draw districts in your jurisdiction that are drawn solely for the base of rate, on the base of race. It can just be like one of the factors that you think about, not a factor that drives the drawing of districts. And that's why when we described each of the districts, we described the rationale was cities, school districts, and the existing lines. So that you understand that we weren't drawing districts based on a racial composition.
Okay, so I, I thought maybe it was required. So, so it's not required for us to do that?
It's not allowed for you to use races as a predominant factor.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was a requirement, actually. So that's really interesting. So I misunderstood.
It's a little bit of a tricky
Yeah, yeah.
legal area.
Okay.
You might be required to convert to district because of a claim from a minority population that your district are violating their rights. But then once you're actually drawing the lines, unless you have a majority-minority district where the Federal Voting Rights Act would trump the, you know, the traditional rules, then you have to use non-racial criteria to devise your lines. You have to understand, you can look at those minority populations and ensure that they're being drawn in a way that isn't diluting their voting power. But it can't be the, the wording is can't be the predominant factor in line draw.
Okay, I misunderstood the, the, the reason for the, for the redrawing the districts. So thanks for explaining that. I appreciate that. Okay.
Kimmy, let me know that Rancho Santiago used another consultant last time.
Okay, thank, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me know. I appreciate you letting me know. Okay, trustee Whit Redell.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, are we, you said we're not in violation of any Voting Act the way we are district, district right now.
So are your district, I, to clarify, when you're voting for trustees, are you voting district-wide or only into your individual election districts?
They have been voting district-wide. This is the election where they're going to switch to voting within districts.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, so the California Voting Rights Act would be the one that pushes the election system. But even though you're doing that, you still can't use races as the predominant factor when you're actually drawing the districts.
I thought that was the requirement, why we have to break up into districts. I, I wasn't, I didn't understand what, why, why we are required by law to break up into districts.
So it's the thing that's putting you through the door, it's requiring the change, it's making you do this?
Yeah.
But once you're now doing it, you have to kind of clean slate, look at the multiple factors in how you're going to draw districts. And still not use races as a predominant factor, but you should be looking at it. And you definitely don't want to draw lines that could be perceived as, as trying too much, to dilute the voting power of the minority.
No, I wouldn't want to do that for sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Whit Redell.
Yeah, Paul, is, but my question was, is there a problem with, if you look at the current lines, is there a problem with the way we are divided right now in areas? Yes, I know we voted as a district, but we've always known our area, per se. Is there a problem with that one? Are we in violation of any voting rights?
So there's nothing wrong with your lines, per se, in terms of that they represent communities, I'm sure. And I'm sure that there is something that the public recognizes and understands. But at the same time, they are in violation of that 10% deviation. They can't be a 10%, they can't be at 71% deviation. You can't legally have one district that has 200,000 people, another district that has 100,000 people. That kind of inequality means that the people in the 100,000-person district get one trustee and the people in 2,000, 100, 2,000, 100,000 gets one trustee. The people in the 200,000-person district essentially has their representation cut in half.
Well, we have that with one area, yes. Okay.
Yeah, so since you have that with one area, well, actually, it also, even if you balance that district with its 216,000 people, even if you balanced it down to like 150,000, you still have to bring that 110,000 district up to around 150,000. So you have to do both of those things. And that ends up not being something, that ends up having like domino effects. Once you create, once you make that radical a change, it, it affects everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that, are there any other comments? No, I think, I think you've heard the board, so appreciate your moving forward with some of the board's suggestions. Thank you very, very much for the presentation. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and at this point, thank, it, thank you for the presentation. And if any members of the public wish to address the board on any of these three plans, please use the raise your hand feature and you will be unmuted and asked to speak. And comments on these maps cannot exceed five minutes. So are there any, there are some people that wish to speak? One person wishes to speak. Thank you.
I will be allowing Margot Lovett to speak.
Oh, Margot, okay, great.
Wonderful. Thank you all. So Paul, I've, I've got a question about terminology that I raised at the last board meeting. It's something that, that I find confusing, which is your use of the term district to refer to what we call trustee areas, right? We are the South Orange County Community College District, and within that district, we've got trustee areas. So I'm not sure if the board is fine with, with us talking about little districts within a big district. I'm, I'm fine with that. I just find this confusing, right?
Yeah, I apologize. I apologize for that. The, it, it, since it's called redistricting, and since we talk about it with water districts and school districts and everybody else, even school districts have the same issue. They say, we're the current Unified School District. We have board seats. Another one says we have board areas. Another, you know, it's the different terminology. And I'm a pro of the community college system. I spent a lot of time at at Saddleback, and I was a student in Orange Coast, so I'm definitely close, close, close with the community college system. I understand that we call them areas at most community college districts. So I, sorry, I lapse into calling them districts because it's redistricting. And so it's just a terminology thing.
Okay, because we, you are correct when you asked if we had district-wide elections, and we do. But my understanding is that the board has approved us going to area elections going forward, which means you will simply, the voters in the area that you represent will be the only ones that vote for you. Now, that does make the concern that with redistricting, we may have existing trustees who are representing the same area. They cannot simply move to a new area, right? We, they are required to live in the area which they represent. So I think that that is something that, that should be taken into consideration as we draw the new map. So those are my two comments.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you so much, Professor Lovett. I appreciate your comments. Are there any other people that want to make comments?
No, there are not.
Is there any further discussion of the matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing no further public comment or discussion for the board, the public hearing is now closed. And thank you so much. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Can I move to extend, extend the meeting to 9:30 PM?
Oh, but first, we have a, we're required by law to have a roll call, board, because some people might be listening. So until we have the, the full meeting in public with everybody here, we still have to have a roll call as well. That, that's required by law, you know. All these laws, you know. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Okay, trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Redell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the, the next, the next meeting, the next, the next agenda item is 7.1 and
No, what about 6.1?
Oh, I'm sorry. The next item is 6.1. It's the Resolution Number 2124, which is authorizing remote teleconferencing board meetings pursuant to AB 361. It's a new board. It's a new law that was passed to allow us to continue these meetings remotely. So we're voting to keep the meeting remote this month and next month. So are there any questions or problems?
No.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
We need a motion in a second.
Oh, we need a motion in a second, sorry.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay makes the motion. Who seconds it?
Aye.
Trustee Wright seconds it. So now, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll to allow us to have these meetings, hybrid meeting this month and next month?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Redell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
The electronic voting system is now open for you to vote.
Okay, oh, so now we all vote.
I don't understand. Oh, okay.
Okay, so now everyone, please vote. You push the voting screen button and then you you vote yes, no, or abstain using your finger or this pill, this pin.
Doesn't she need to?
The rubber tip, sorry. Or you can use your finger. This is our new voting system, which we've never used before. This is the very first time in the history of the board that we're using this. Just explaining to our public. All right.
9:30.
Okay, it's, it's unanimous that we're, we're voting, we voted to extend the meeting to 9:30.
No, this is 6.1.
This one was 6.1.
I'm sorry. Okay, this is on item 6.1. To authorize us to have a hybrid meeting.
So I think we can move on to 7.1.
I don't, it's still, it's still on my screen, though. The old, the old thing, there it goes. Okay, so now we're moving on to 7.1, which is a report I requested. I didn't realize the meeting would be so long. Which is, I wanted a career education report. And, and last month, it was for Irvine Valley College, and this month is for Saddleback College. So I believe Vood Tran Vood Kumamoto is going to be presenting this, this agenda item.
Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Burke. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share how Saddleback is uniquely positioned to support the county's economic recovery with our CTE programs. Next slide. As noted by the Orange County Business Council's president in its July 2021 article, our CTE programs are well positioned to provide more direct and hands-on learning experiences for students so that they can prepare to meet the workforce needs of our county. Next slide. For tonight's presentation, I'm going to be covering our programs in three parts. The first part, I'll be sharing with you our employment outcomes. The second part, I'll be sharing with you the analysis of our CTE programs broken up into effective program areas and partially effective program areas. And then the third part, I'll share with you our future directions for program opportunities. Next slide. First off, our CTE programs are broken up into 34 program areas that include 180 CTE certificates and degrees. These programs make up 32% of our credit FTS portfolio, and they are 37% of our program award completions. Next slide. When we looked at our student employment outcome survey of 2020, we found that 92% of our students are satisfied, are very satisfied with the training and education that they've received with us. 70% of the students got a job in zero to three months. And 70% of those who were employed were employed in full-time jobs. 71% of our students secured a job that was very close or close, really related to their program of study. And when we looked at their salaries before and after training at Saddleback College, we saw an increase of $7.50 more per hour than when they started with us. Next slide. Next, I'd like to share with you our analysis of our CTE programs. Next slide, please. The analysis, what we did was we looked at demand. And our demand is defined as annual jobs within our five neighboring counties versus the completer, completers and our increasing labor market demand success. What we did was we looked at 40% of the program awards within the program area with 10 or more completers or employment after exit. Next slide. In considering these two variables, what we did was programs that were categorized under effective programs had a positive demand and a positive success data. And for programs that were partially effective, those are programs that we had that were either positive in demand or positive in our success criteria. Next slide. So here's the list of the programs that, areas with positive demand and success. Next slide. So I'd like to highlight one of our positive, effective programs, our Computer Maintenance Technology Program. If you look at the full report, you'll be able to look at each of the program areas highlighted. And the report will provide you with information about the program and some data with regards to our regional completions, annual job openings, and then completions for this particular program. You'll see in 2021, we're 22 awards, and our enrollments were 80 students, and that's duplicated head counts. Next slide, please. So this is a video showing our computer maintenance program as well as electronic tech.
Great. Motherboard.
Oh, the volume is not on.
It's virtual reality?
Yeah, as you can see, our computer maintenance technology program is two parts. It has the computer maintenance as well as electronic tech. What I wanted to share with you was this video that we had put together with regards to the program and how it helps to prepare our students in this area. We've recognized that, given COVID and our move towards technology, just even in the last year, that while this program is kind of, it's effective as it is now in preparing our students for jobs in our area, I do believe that it is actually going to be even more in demand as we go forward. The program also includes electronic tech. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that our electronic tech program is on the positive demand, and it's partially effective, meaning that we have an opportunity with these programs on this slide, specifically electronic tech, to get more students through, because the demand out there is exceeding the number of students that we have completing. We're anticipating that both the computer maintenance and electronic tech to be at the forefront of getting the Orange County area back in rebound after COVID times. So next slide. This is a student quote with regards to our horticulture program, which is also a partially effective program, meaning we do have an opportunity to get more students through as the demand for horticulture and landscape design is exceeding the number of students we have completed. Next slide. These are partially effective program areas with positive success. And what that means is that while the demand isn't there, we do see that a lot of our students are meeting their program outcomes and are succeeding in completing the program. You'll notice that the list of these programs are programs that are entry and lead to additional certification and/or other types of careers. And so we believe that while these programs don't have high demand, they do enable our students to build confidence as they complete the program and head towards additional career opportunities. Next slide. Here's a quote from one of our interior design students with regards to the program and the skills that they build through AutoCAD. Next slide. So where are we going to be going in the future with regards to our CTE programs? Next slide. I wanted to share initially, these are programs that are currently in development and/or pending approval. And you'll notice there, we are looking at expanding our business program offerings and are looking at building certificates as well as degree programs. We do believe that the certificates will be widely accessed. In our SIM, Computer Information Management, we're looking at building out data analytics. Culinary arts, we're looking at hospitality management. And in our early childhood education, we're looking at adding another level of associate teacher leading towards elementary education as well. Next slide. These are opportunities that we see that are positive LMI in living wage salaries. And what we're looking at is these as potentials of areas that we might be pursuing. So I thought I'd share that with you all. You'll notice that in our health science, there is a large list of potential programs that we would be considering. Under our other areas, under SIM, technology, science technology, you'll see chemistry technician. In our math, science, and engineering, there's some civil engineering technician, library science, library technician, and kinesiology. We do see sports medicine and letter trainer as being an area with positive LMI, living wage salaries. So our hope as we go into the future is we would be expanding CTE programs that would hit both of these variables as we hope to provide our students with opportunities for upward mobility. Next slide. So before I end our presentation, I do want to share with you that in February is the CTE Public Awareness Campaign Month, and we do hope to bring back a resolution to the board to acknowledge and celebrate CTE Month in February. And next slide. So that's the end of our presentation. And you'll notice there, at the bottom, is our website to the career education program information. You'll have access to video clips similar to what we shared, although it would have sound. And you can look into our specific programs as you wanted to, if you wanted to find out additional information.
Yeah. Okay, you finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Vu Kumamoto. That was excellent. The reason I asked for this program was I saw that article by Lucy Dunn from the Orange County Business Council and the Orange County Register saying that it's the community colleges that are going to raise Orange County out of the recession caused by the worldwide pandemic, which certainly crippled so many businesses and had so many people lose their jobs. And I thought, well, let me find out firsthand what are CTE programs. And just for our public, the CTE means career and technical education. It used to be called vocational education, but they don't call it that anymore. They call it CTE now. The, you know, terminology changes. So I appreciate the program. And then when it was presented last month, we found out that it's a law right now that the board is supposed to get a report on all the CTE programs every two years. So I thought I was prescient to ask for this report. But I just have a few questions. It sounds like there are wonderful CTE programs offered at both colleges. You know, I noticed that in your second report that was on the board agenda, I read the agenda online, many of us do that. It showed a checkpoint for the programs that were really successful, and a checkpoint for programs that there aren't as many jobs available. And I'm just wondering, for instance, like a program like paramedic and EMT, it said that it's very effective in students, but it's partially effective in getting jobs. And I know that our EMT program and our paramedic program is, I remember when we initiated, it's a wonderful program, and the students love it. I thought they were all getting jobs in the community. Is that not true?
The EMT program itself is kind of an entry point, and those students have to end up going into paramedics.
Yeah, I meant the paramedic program. That's what I really meant.
Additional programming. So as I shared, those programs that were on that list, they're usually entrees into additional higher-level positions. So that's why it's on that list.
So do the students that complete our paramedic program not get jobs in the community or in our area?
They actually have to sometimes relocate, because there's only certain numbers of positions.
They have to leave what? I'm sorry.
They might have to relocate.
Oh, relocate. Sorry, sorry. Okay, that's really interesting. Thank you. And do we offer cybersecurity, a job, you know, training in cybersecurity? I noticed computer training, and cybersecurity was in there, but it was kind of like not highlighted.
Yeah, our cybersecurity program is a collaboration between our Computer Information Management and our Computer Science Program. You'll notice that under the programs that were listed as partially effective, which is Slide 12, we have Computer Information Management, and cybersecurity is part of that.
Okay, I did see it there, but it wasn't highlighted. So, I mean, I understand that these students that complete cybersecurity training get really very, very highly-paid jobs. Is that, do you find that true?
Yes, there are opportunities for cybersecurity. And, you know, what we did with this presentation is because we have such a large number of programs, we grouped them up into program areas, and that's why it's not labeled as cybersecurity, but it's under the Computer Information Management.
And I also noted, like automotive technology, it said that it was a highly-successful program, but for some reason, there wasn't student completion. And I thought it was a wonderful program. Maybe I misunderstood the way you labeled it.
Yeah, so the program has demand. And our students, what's happening is our students are not completing certification and/or degrees.
Oh, really?
And a lot of times, our students are either, they leave and get jobs and are not completing. And so that is definitely an area that we're going to be working on as we revamp our program in preparation for opening up at ATEP. Our hope is, in the automotive area, that we would be building on our existing program, but adding on certification that would allow students to expand into electronic sensor technology as well as autonomous vehicle.
Yes, autonomous cars and electric cars and being able to, you know, fix all those really new cars that are computer-generated, computer-driven. So that's really good. And also, I, once attended a meeting, they have, they have to have meetings every year for all these CTE programs with people in the, that are working in the field. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. All of our programs, all of our career programs do require that we have an advisory committee that are made up of professionals out in the field that would then participate to help us update and refine our programs to better meet the workforce needs.
I remember I once attended one, and it was a program for actually interior decoration. And one of the people in the field said the students should take art, because sometimes they're trying to teach, tell people what they want, how they want their house to be redecorated. And if they could sketch it out really quickly, then, you know, they'd do better in their, in their, in their jobs. So just, you know, they get little tips from the people out in the field, so it's great. I'll ask other people if they have any other questions. Do you have a question, Trustee Jamal?
Just a comment. First of all, thank you, Tram. A good presentation. It's, by the way, both of our colleges have outstanding CTE programs. Both are excellent, and it's one of the reasons I actually ran for office to try to, because of my knowledge of what was going on with the CTE programs, and they're both fabulous. But two questions. And also, it's great to see the spike in compensation and salaries as a result of getting a CTE, getting a certificate or going through one of our programs. That's awesome. Tram, my question is on the future. I'm just wondering, is there a process for prioritizing what programs would come online in the future? You have a, I know you have a list here of a number of programs that are considering bringing on board in the future. Is there a prioritization of those programs or, and a process to move forward?
As you know, our curriculum is an area in which we rely on our faculty to support the development. Of course, aspects of program development that we want to look at with regards to new programs is that, one, they meet both the labor market demand as well as provide a living wage, high living wage for our students. So that's definitely a criteria that we're going to be looking at as programs that would provide both. In addition, we are looking at programs that would give us a good balance of portfolio within our program portfolio. And then, lastly, we would look at any programs that would help complement and add to our program diversity so that we would be able to provide our students with options.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for any other board member? No? And I also think, as you know, it's really important to make sure there's jobs in the field for our students to get if we're training them for a job. And it's really important for our students to help the local companies make sure they get good workers, and that's what we do best. So thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
President Vu Kumamoto. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next meeting. The Board of Trustees' meeting minutes. Is there a motion in a second for this?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion, and Trustee Wright seconds it. Is there, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? And then we'll vote electronically after that.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Now we vote electronically, right?
Yes.
So, does everyone know how to do it?
Don't you know how to do that?
You push the voting screen button? Let me.
Did we do it right? Come up? Oh, yeah, we got to go back to the Zoom screen.
So we're waiting for it to populate, right?
No, it already did that.
Oh, so it's already passed? I didn't, I didn't get it on my screen. Okay, so the next, the next item is 7.3, Board Policy Revisions, and these are for review and study. Does, are there, does somebody please make a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jamal makes a motion. Is there a second? Trustee Jay makes a second. Seconds. So are there any comments on this? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Thank you.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Now we have to do this.
Yeah, no, you could, you could do it while you're doing it, but... Okay, the next, well, we've already passed it, so I might as well go on. 7.4 is the Board Policy Revisions, but we looked at them, and this last item passed unanimously, as we already know, because we did it orally. So the next, next agenda item is the Board Policy Revisions. We actually studied them last month, and this month is for approval. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Prendergast motions, and Trustee Jay seconds it. So are there any comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes?
So this came up in our board... So this, this came up in our board policy subcommittee. I don't know if Ann Marie's on. So on agenda development, I noticed that there's no mention of how the board would get items on the agenda, board members, board of trustee members to get items on the agenda. So I know this is focused on the agenda development by staff, but it, it's still not clear to me after a few years on the board, how a board member goes about requesting to get an item on the agenda. Because I think, you know, being, going to the board president, then you get into the problem of a serial meeting. If you tell the one board member, then it could possibly get to another member. Is there, what is the process currently for a board member to request for an item to get on the agenda?
Ann Marie, is, your hand is up, Ann Marie? That's a good question.
I'll defer to Dr. Burke.
You would contact our office. Chancellor's office.
So, but it's nowhere in our board policy. It doesn't say it anywhere, how a board member would get.
No, you're no different in that sense than a member of the public. And any member of the public has the right to put something on the agenda.
But shouldn't we put that in our board policy somewhere?
So, I mean, it's possible.
I mean, do you, let me ask my colleagues, do you know, did you know that, how to get an item on the agenda if you wanted one?
No. I mean, what's an example of something that you want to place on the agenda? Because you have a, a method to ask for a board report.
No, I'm talking about an agenda item because the way this reads, and I know it reads that, because you've changed the, we've changed the language, instead of consulting with the board president, you're consulting with your staff. And then, then the board officers get the agenda presented ever, after it's a fait accompli. So my question again is, should we put in the board policy or make clear how a board member would want to request an item to go on the agenda? And you're saying to contact chancellor's office, and that's fine. If that's the policy, then maybe we should put in writing somewhere.
So what would you, what would you like to do with the item this evening? Do you want to pass it and ask that it be brought back through the process? Or would you like to pull it from this agenda? And have it reviewed?
What do you guys think?
I would say pull it.
I don't have a preference either way.
I, I mean, personally, I, I'm trying to think of a situation where you'd want to put, where a board member would want something put on the agenda.
Well, I've had some instances when I've wanted to put things on an agenda, but I wasn't sure how to do it. When I was board president, it was easier. I could suggest it because the board president has regular communications with the chancellor because that's the way it should be. So.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if it's not obviously clear how to do it, it needs to be written down to be clear. And I'm just wondering if it's, would it be in the policy or in the AR?
Good question.
I would think it would be in the policy because the policies affect how the board.
And then I'll make a motion to pull this board policy until it can be reexamined and potentially revised.
I second it.
But we're going to pass, pass the rest of them then or just, just that one board policy?
Then it'd need to be a motion for the balance. First, you have to get a vote to pull it.
Yeah, you do.
Which board policy specifically is it?
The agenda.
2340.
2340.
Yeah. Okay. So, so trustee.
Wait, no.
What?
Is it 2340? Oh, sorry, my dysnumerous thing kicked in. I was looking at 2430.
Yes.
Yeah, so motion to pull 24, or 2340 for revision.
No, no.
And then we had a second from trustee.
Jay.
Jay.
So now.
So you have to vote on that first.
Yes.
And then you can do a motion for the balance of the, of the policy.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, could you call the roll for voting on, on pulling this one particular item?
Yes. Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion and a second. Oh, we still have to do the, oh, are you prepared to do the electronic for pulling that one item? No? I don't know if they can do it.
I made the motion.
No, 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 I know you did, but they have to send. Oh, I see, sorry. Okay, thank you. There it is.
Yeah, because when it, when it's something that's not on the agenda, they have to type it up, so it takes a little longer.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
All right, now I move the balance of the board policies.
Is there a second? Trustee.
I second it.
Okay, trustee Prandergast makes the motion and trustee seconds it to move the balance of the board policy. Everybody should be voting electronically now on the last item. I just voted on that. And then.
This is the balance.
So yeah, I think you need to call the roll for the, the balance of the items, okay?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
We're going to have to extend the meeting in another eight minutes, so.
Well, before the eight minutes.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to extend the meeting?
I move that we extend the meeting to 10 o'clock.
Okay, is, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, trustee Wright seconded it. And Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll? Thank you.
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell? Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Now there's a consent calendar. Are there? Yeah, are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? Anybody would like to pull any items? I'd like to pull one item, just to comment on it. And it's item 9.5, parking fees for spring 2022. If not, is, is there a motion and a second for the rest of the consent calendar then?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And trustee Rydell seconds it. Very good, thank you. And, oh, please, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And this is item 9.5. I just want to bring it to people's attention that we're not charging any parking fees for the whole spring semester 2022 for either staff or students or anybody, because it's the first time people are coming back and we don't know how many students will be on campus or how many will be voting remotely. So we're just doing our best to help people when they come back and help our staff and help our students. So I just want to make that comment. So is there a motion and a second for that item?
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, trustee Jamal seconds it. Can you please call the roll for that?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to item, human resources, which is item 11.1, and that's academic, you know, I can't see it on my screen here, academic employment. So do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee, trustee Jay makes the motion and trustee Wright makes a second. And then are there, Vice Chancellor Viscachill, are there any changes on this item?
Looking for. Actually, there are, there is one, for sure.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, we can hear you.
Page nine of nine, Dr. Bermucchi changed his retirement dates after the agenda was published. And so D1 on nine of nine, exhibit A, it should say 12/23/21.
Okay.
12/23/21 is the change.
Thank you. So I just want to say that trustee, that Bob Bermucchi has been our vice chancellor for the IT for over 13 years and our IT department is superb and we've always been above the cutting edge of everything and really providing the best IT service for our students and staff. And just want to thank him for all his service and wish him well in his, in his future careers. And I'm sure he's going to do fabulous because he's got, he's a very talented individual. That's it. So can you please call, what?
He's been here for 13.
Over 13 years, right.
Years, and four.
It's what?
In four months.
In four months, yeah, that's right, absolutely. So, so Grace Garcia, can you please call the roll? Sorry to.
Trustee Enman? Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And then item, oh, now we have to vote electronically, right? What if we don't vote electronically? While we're voting orally, what if we don't vote electronically and we just use the oral thing now?
It's up to you. We're marking you. We're marking you as.
So why don't we just, just use the oral and not use the electronic right now until we have to use it? Because it just.
It's easier for you.
It doesn't matter? You're sure it doesn't matter? Doesn't make any difference? And then, and then when we go to fully face to face in person, then we'll use the electronic because then we won't have to call the roll. So let's just do the roll from now on. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Okay, cool. I like being in charge. Okay. The next item is 11.2, classified personnel action. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jamal makes the motion and trustee Prandergast seconds. Vice Chancellor Viscachill, are there any changes on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Changes on page one, it is A1F. Andrew Van Valier, it should say it's a 10-month assignment, not a 12-month assignment. So A1F, Andrew Van, Van Valier should say a 10-month assignment per year.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I guess Madam Secretary can call the roll, okay?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
And trustee Wright?
Aye.
And then 11.3, non-bargaining unit personnel actions, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion, is there a second? Trustee Jamal makes a second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Chancellor Viscachill, are there any changes or?
No changes to this item, thank you.
So can you please call the roll?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the next item, 11.5, I'm sorry, 11.4, is the tenure tracked, the wishlist for both colleges of who they wish to hire in their tenure track positions for the fall. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion and trustee Enman seconds it. Are there any comments? That's a good list, actually. I hope they can hire them all. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Enman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, the, the next item is 11.5, employment agreement for Kathleen F Burke, chancellor. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Prandergast makes the motion, trustee Jamal seconds it. And I have a, a comment. I went, I'd like to thank, we'd like to thank Chancellor Burke for her excellent service as chancellor to our district during the most challenging pandemic that our country and perhaps the entire world has ever experienced. This was a very difficult time for our employees and students and for all of us. Chancellor Burke has informed us that she's going to be leaving. We thank her for helping us get through the worst times and help us get back to the best times as she has agreed to work with us through the end of August. I urge everyone to read the beautiful email she sent to the entire SOCCCD community earlier today. She discussed the pandemic, the challenges we all faced in trying to keep everyone safe and the new challenges of still keeping everyone safe as we welcome students and staff back into our colleges. We are also continuing our, our progress in meeting the goals in our facilities master plan. We wish Dr. Burke the best as she pursues her other interests and opportunities. We will soon begin the search for a new chancellor. We will form a committee that has representation of every constituent group in the district. It will be collegial, open and transparent process. We appreciate each one of your cooperation and assistance in this most important endeavor for the future of our district and of our colleges. Thank you. Okay, is there anything anybody else would like to say or? No?
Save it for when.
I don't want her to leave.
Yeah, I know.
Board President Miltucher?
Yes, yes.
Before the board votes on this item, I'm required to read some components of the contract in a public setting.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Kathleen Burke is the name of the employee, position Chancellor. The contract dates July 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2022. Annual salary $360,500. Automobile allowance $625, cell phone $165, and internet $100. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chancellor Viscaillot. So now, do you have anything you'd like to say, or probably not? Hello? Chancellor Burke, would you like to, no, no, okay.
Nope.
So, she's very happy. Okay, now we move forward. Can you please call the roll? Thank you.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
I abstain.
Abstain?
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, now, these are just, these are just, 13.1 is Staff Response to Public Comments from Previous Board Meeting. I don't think we have to vote on these, do we? You just go through them. 13.2 is Saddleback College.
Hold, please. Hold, please. 13.1. I know we don't have anything written in response to public speakers, but I think it's important that we do give some acknowledgement. It's been stated earlier by some other people, the people that have spoke for their side one way or the other on the vaccine mandate should be commended for taking part in the process.
Yeah.
Even today, standing in the rain on the corner to express their views, they should be commended for that.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we clarify that our vote last month was not for a pure absolute mandate. I think that's been misunderstood.
What?
That it's a policy that's still being developed, and that while it is going to be a mandate of some form, there are things that need to be worked out. And the claim that we weren't listening, I just want to make sure it's clear, we absolutely were listening, or we wouldn't have brought up the idea of an antibody part of the policy. Wouldn't have brought up the, or acknowledged the issue with the veterans needing to be on campus one day. I think those things are still being developed, and we're going to be a part of that process. So I just want to acknowledge that, that we are listening, and we do care about everyone in this district, but we also have to go with what's best for getting people back into the classroom, based on the information we have. And it's not always agreed upon, but it's, it's the best we have.
Yeah, that was beautifully said, and I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you so much, trustee Prendergast.
And you did, you did see that all of the comments, the written comments from last term were appended to the minutes for the meeting.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, that was excellent. So we did listen. We might not have commented on every speak, but we did listen. And we do have accommodations for religious accommodations, for health accommodations, and we're, we have things that we're working with some of our employees, to try to make it easier on some of the employees. So you're absolutely right. We have been listening, but we, just important to keep our students safe and our staff safe when they come back, so, but we are listening.